Oh, yes. Probably so, but let's talk with Bill and make sure. Okay. Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order this October 2nd, 2018, meeting of the Gallatin City Council. And we'll begin this meeting like we begin every meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Alexander is going to offer the invocation. Our pledge this evening will be led by Councilwoman Love. If you'd stand with me, please.
Let it in your heart, pray. Father God, once again, we come to say thank you for this beautiful day that thou has created. We thank you for this city and all this representative and all that we stand for. And I pray of God that this meeting will be something pleasing to your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray in every heart, say it. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ketchel, if you could call the roll for us, please. Vice Mayor Overton.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Camp.
Present.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
And Mr. Mayberry.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you, Ms. Ketchel. Now, before you, you have the minutes from the September 4th, 2018 council meeting and the September 18th council meetings.
I'll just approve both.
Have a motion to approve both by Vice Mayor Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any additions or corrections, Ms. Love?
None that I noticed.
Awesome. Thank you. Any further, anyone else with suggestions, additions, corrections, changes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. They are approved unanimously. Now, we have public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that anyone may come forward and speak to an item that's on the agenda. I will advise you that there are two public hearings on the agenda this evening. One is for ordinance 01809-47, and that's related to the development off of, for Nichols Place, off of Clear Lake, in the Clear Lake Meadows area. The second is ordinance, for ordinance number 01809-48, which is the development plan at the entrance of Fairview Plantation. So if you have concerns about either of those projects, you may wish to wait and speak under the public hearings. Otherwise, I would invite you to come forward at this time and ask that you introduce yourself and give us your address when you do so. Public hearing, um, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open. And I see no one indicating they wish to speak, so I will say public hearing on agenda-related items is closed. Taking us now into mayor's comments, I have just a few events to share with the council and with the public. The first is that tomorrow morning at 8:30, there is a coffee with a cop opportunity at Govan's Coffee Shop. It goes from 8:30 until 9:30. On the 5th of October, you'll want to be sure and wish new great-granddad David Gregory, happy birthday. There's also Manufacturing Day celebration, and the council, you all have been advised and invited to this, sponsored by our Economic Development Agency. That's happening at Volunteer State Community College in the Woods Campus Center. This weekend, of course, is Main Street Festival. That happens all day on Saturday from 10 until 5, hoping for great weather. And we always have a huge crowd for this event, and encourage everyone to turn out for that. Also, throughout the weekend is the Handmade Harvest Vintage Farm Fair happening out at Cragfont. And then on Saturday night is the 22nd Annual Candlelight Cemetery Tour at the Gallatin City Cemetery, benefiting the Sumner County Museum. That's from 4:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. And finally, on Sunday is National Firefighters Memorial Day. So remember that important day. At this time, I'm going to ask the organizers, the promoters, the advocates, the cheerleaders, for Holiday Fest to come forward, and I have a proclamation to present. I'm certainly not feeling very festive in comparison. I particularly like the striped shirt with the Santa hat. I want to introduce, first of all, well, Mr. Evgen is over there taking pictures, but Ms. Linda Evgen is here beside me. I'm going to ask her to introduce everyone, because I see king and queen banners, and have at it, Ms. Evgen.
Every year, when we started Holiday Fest about 13 years ago, we decided that we were benefiting the charities of the, of the Sumner County. And so every year, we ask the nonprofits to nominate two people to serve as the king and queen of the Holiday Fest season, which is from September until January. And this year, it's Tommy and Rachel McNally, and you know them because they are the movers and the shakers that made Mary's Magical Place Park in Hendersonville. And the other people are board members, and the fellow in the striped shirt is a big boater, and he helps with the annual boat parade. That's Peter Erickson. And then Beverly and Irene are on our board. So we have a board of 18 people. We're a nonprofit. Nobody's paid. We're all volunteers, but we like to do it because we get to wear Santa hats.
Well, certainly, I want to thank you all for being here. And I want to take the opportunity on behalf of the City of Gallatin saying to Mr. and Mrs. McCauley, thank you for your efforts with Mary's Magical Place. Congratulations. And I know just today, I saw one of our city employees sharing a picture of her child this afternoon there. So very exciting for everyone in this area, and I know that you guys put a lot of heart and soul into that for a very special young girl. Mary's Magical Place, if you don't know his name, after their little girl. And so we appreciate it, and are so proud and so thankful to you all. Big congratulations. The holiday season, September through January, I guess maybe the longest anywhere, but we're glad to have it in Sumner County. And I am honored to present this presentation to you guys. This says, whereas the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, proclaims that the holiday season began in Gallatin, we're saying on October 1st, 2018, and whereas Holiday Fest, a Sumner County holiday tradition, was established in 2007 and is celebrating its 12th-year anniversary this season. You wrote this right. Okay, okay. And whereas Holiday Fest events honor the season as well as community creativity, literacy, charity, and tradition, and encompasses many opportunities for residents to enjoy the true spirit of the season. And whereas, in Gallatin, the county seat of Sumner County, Holiday Fest will be a time when all citizens can enjoy the Christmas season with many festivities, including Tensile and Treasures Holiday Open House, Garland's and Glitter Fashion Show, Mary Mantle's at Rosemont, the Children's Enchanted Ball at Hampton Inn, the Academy Arts Christmas Show, the annual Christmas tree lighting, breakfast with Santa, the St. Nicholas Ball, the annual Christmas parade, Music City Bronze Christmas Concert, Tubah Christmas, Reefs Across America, and Appalachian Dinner at Stonewall. Yeah, we might be the biggest celebration anywhere. Now, therefore, I, Paige Brown, Mayor of the City of Gallatin, do hereby declare the 2018-2019 Holiday Fest season to be in effect until January 31st, 2018, and encourage all citizens to participate in these special holiday events. So thank you to the organizers, all the volunteers, the board. It really does take everybody in this community putting in some work and then participating and enjoying and donating some money here and there. So thank you all for what you do, and congratulations to you.
Thank you.
You need to stand up there a little bit further away from us, but you step up.
Forty-one years of marriage, you know? All right. Got it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all.
We're excited this year because the Appalachian, I'm very excited this year because the Appalachian Dinner will benefit the Sumner Museum. So please come out and see the storytellers and hear the music for the Appalachian Dinner at Stonewall. Thank you.
Thank you. Doesn't that make everyone in such a festive mood?
Yeah.
Wow, it does me. All right, that concludes, well, now I had something else that Councilman Alexander may, wants me to be sure to mention, and I will be happy to. It's coming up a little later in the month. It's on Saturday, the 13th. It's the Sumner County NAACP 49th Annual Freedom Fund Banquet, First Baptist Church on Winchester. I know that the council and department heads have received an invitation to that, and I will be in attendance. So we'll look forward to that as well.
Hey, Mary, don't forget the Sumner County Walk Across Sumner, isn't that Saturday?
I don't have it on my calendar, but yeah, typically it is, so.
I think it's Saturday.
Yeah. It always kicks off on the Main Street Festival day, and so that happens at the Civic Center. What time, Mr. Brown, you know?
I'm not sure.
Is it 7:30?
I think it's usually like 7:00 in the morning.
Okay, and that's at the Civic Center, and that's for all the schoolchildren in Sumner County to encourage a healthier lifestyle, so we will certainly support that as well. That is going to conclude the mayor's comments, moving us into the regular agenda. And the first item this evening is the public hearing on ordinance 01809-47, and for that, I recognize Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing in the northern city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning 4.77 acre partial from R-40 low-density residential to R-40 multiple residential and office district, and approving a master development plan for Nichols, Nichols Place, located south of Nichols Lane and east of the proposed Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard Extension. Authorized provision to be indicated on official zoning atlas repealing conflicting ordinance provided for severability and providing for an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
So the public hearing on this item is now open, and we invite anyone to come forward that wishes to speak on it. Okay, I see no one wishing to speak, and so I will declare public hearing on ordinance 01809-47 closed. Item two is a public hearing on ordinance 01809-48, and for that, Councilman Hayes is recognized.
This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving an amendment to the Fairview Plantation Phase 19 preliminary master development plan for a 2.87 acre lot located south of Nashville Pike and west of Plantation Boulevard, authorizing the amendment to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Public hearing is now open on ordinance 01809-48. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. I see no one, so I will declare public hearing on ordinance 01809-48 closed. We move to item number three, which is second reading on ordinance 01809-44. Councilman Mayberry.
Yes, ma'am. This is an ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter 9, Fire Protection and Prevention by Adopting the 2018 International Fire Code and Other Related Matters. Motion to approve.
Here we have a motion by Councilman Mayberry, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is second reading on ordinance 01809-44. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item four, second reading on ordinance 01809-45, and Councilman Mayberry.
This is also, it's an ordinance amending the Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter 5, Buildings and Building Regulation by Adopting the 2018 International Code Council Model Codes and Other Related Matters. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Mayberry, a second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01809-45. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item five is second reading on ordinance 01809-46. Councilman Mayberry, it's you again.
All right. This also, it's an ordinance amending the fee schedules for building, electrical, fire prevention, plumbing, and mechanical permits, which means they're going up. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Mayberry, second by Councilwoman Love.
Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01809-46. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item six is second reading on ordinance 01809-49. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriating $8,506.75 for the second annual firefighters' recognition banquet, and I so move.
Can you discuss? Okay, motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion?
I think somebody wanted to ask the chief whether they're going to have chicken there. I don't, I tell my, I didn't know.
Who might that be?
Bone.
Councilman Alexander with bones.
Bone and chip.
I have a feeling they might look out for you on that front. It says, okay, this is second reading on ordinance 01809-49. All in favor, no, I'm not going to go there. All in favor of approving, say aye. Opposed, say no.
Would you?
It does pass unanimously. Item seven is second reading on ordinance 01809-50. Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriating funds in amount of $10,000 for land appraisals, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion?
What is this for?
This is for the appraisal of the land that the city is looking at being able to purchase.
For?
For future land preservation.
Does it give Craig a par? No.
Potentially, he does, potentially.
Give you a fourth of an act.
Any other discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01809-50. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Passes six to one. Mr. Hayes votes against. Item number eight is Resolution R1809-59. Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the Health, Education, Housing Facility Board of the City of Gallatin to negotiate and accept payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is a resolution. It is Resolution R1809-59. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda and brings us now to other business. Who on this council might have some other business they'd like to bring forward? No one? No one? Well, then I will bring up one thing, and I'm not asking for any decisions or, or even much discussion if you don't wish, but I did want to make you aware that we are having some issues, particularly this last week, and a very big issue with renting the city hall dining room out on weekends. We had the police called, which wound up in, police called because of some fights, and there was some marijuana, and then there were, and then there were follow-ups. There were a couple of follow-up calls related to the party, and a couple of people arrested at some various parties, but the problem is, is that there's no one in the building on the weekend to oversee these, and, and we don't always, we don't often have problems, but we have had some instances where the dining room and kitchen haven't been taken care of as they should, and we have had, like the instance this weekend.
Can anybody rent it out, or is it too?
Pretty much, I mean.
Why are we still doing that, though, I guess?
Um, I'm not against not doing it, but.
You know, that's something we probably need to bring up at our next committee meeting.
Well, I mean, that's why I'm bringing it up to you guys to think about and be aware of, and then we can, you know, discuss it.
Probably need to put that on agenda for next time, committee or something, so we can talk about it.
But I wanted to make y'all aware of the issue, and you might be able to get some feel from the community and some feedback and stuff.
If we see the media, we've got a camera down there. Was it a private park, or was it organized, an organization?
Well, I don't think it was for, it wasn't for a nonprofit. I mean, typical, I mean, people rent it out for birthday parties, anniversary parties, and graduation parties, and we've allowed that forever, and it's, like, right now, the dining room's rented through the end of the year. So it's used a lot, but it is, well, the management of it is a burden for the city, and then the cleanup of it and the checklist for it are a burden.
So are we just talking about stuff, maybe talking about not having it on the weekends or all the time?
That would be up to you guys. I mean, I'm opposed to neither, or, or maybe just doing it for nonprofits and not individuals.
Doing it for nonprofits or something like that, or civic organization or something.
I mean, there's different options, but I want you guys to be aware and have some time to think on it. Any other other business?
Yeah.
None?
None.
So we will move now to public recognition on non-agenda-related items, and this is the time that anyone may come forward and speak about something that's on their mind, and Chuck Stewart's meandering this way.
Well, thank you for support on the code adoptions, but I'd like to ask, on item two and four, the fire and the building codes, if it'd be all right with the council for me to give them to November the 15th before we go in action? That gives them 45 days, additional days.
What was the date on there?
I thought the fees, we were going to do the first of the year.
January 1st on the fees, but the code adoption for bringing the new codes in. Now, the electrical code had to go in Monday, yesterday. The state went to the 17 code on electrical yesterday. They have not pushed out their 18 code, so if we give them 45 days, hopefully the state will be out with theirs also.
Thank you.
We probably need to go back and amend, then.
Does it say when it goes in, does it say when it goes in effect?
Immediately.
Well, that's.
Chuck, not that it affects anything, but of all the other municipalities in the county adopted this, such as Hendersonville or Portland.
Hendersonville hasn't moved yet. The county's working toward it right now, and Portland is also working toward it, and I talked to Gulitzville this week, and they wanted our, our code, what we did for them.
Chuck, you said items two and four, and it's not.
It's three and four.
I'm sorry, three and four. It goes into effect on the reading here, but we'd like to not start enforcement until the 15th of November.
Can we bring three and four both back up on the floor?
The winning side can.
I'd like to bring three and four back up and change it to go in effect 45 days from today.
November 15th.
November 15th. That's in the form of amendment to the motion.
I'll second that.
But is electrical in either of those?
Electrical had to go with the state on Monday, so the electrical is in effect, and we had the last class on Thursday of last week.
But is electrical in these ordinances, so we need to pull that out? Okay. So what's the harm in making it first of the year, then?
Well, then we may be behind the state, and we don't want to get behind them. We need to be ahead of them. That's just, they're, we're out of code cycling, and so is the state.
Okay.
So I think 45 days gives them plenty of time to get accustomed to what we're doing in the new code change.
Okay, so we have a, that's not 45 days. You say November 1st or?
I got the rest of, rest of October and 15 days of November to get them there.
Okay, that's fine. So a motion to amend by Vice Mayor Overton, both items three and four, to make the effective date November 15th, 2018. There was a second by, by Councilman Hayes. Any further discussion on this? Okay, the vote is to amend ordinance 01809-44 and 01809-45, making the effective date November 15th, 2018. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do I have to go back and vote on the original ordinances again, now that they've been amended?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to go back, and I'll entertain a motion to approve both ordinances. 01809, motion to approve by Vice Mayor Overton, and second by Councilwoman Love. So we have a motion to approve both, ordinance 01809-44 and 018, wait, ordinance 01809-44 and dash 45 as amended. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is approved unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other, other business? Mr. Rogers is coming forward.
Good evening. Just have a couple of items to advise the council on. Next Tuesday evening, from 4:30 to 5:30, there'll be a public meeting here in the lobby for the Browns Lane sidewalk. So following that, there will also be an item on the agenda. The consultant, Reagan Smith, will be here to, to do a, a presentation for you guys on that. Also, for those of you who may not have heard, we did receive a notice to proceed on the Albert Gallatin Project. So bid notice will go out for advertisement this Friday, and they will be received on November the 5th.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
The meeting will be next Tuesday evening from 4:30 to 5:30, here in the lobby, second floor lobby.
Any opportunity?
Do you have the layout?
Yes, there'll be some maps, visuals.
I was going to say, any opportunity that any of this council has, push that information out to Baypoint, Woodhaven, either of the condo developments or Fairview, you know, any of those homeowner associations, social media pages or whatever, that'd be helpful, because we want people to be aware of the opportunity there.
What's the distance on that sidewalk?
It will go from, I don't know the exact distance, but it will go from Nashville Pike there up to Star Point. I don't know the exact distance.
Is it a bollinger area of it, or a master dead or anything?
I have not personally, but there will be some on display during the meeting on Tuesday.
Right. You got to cut any trees down?
Move some light posts.
Mm-hmm. Any other other business or public comment?
Nope, let's go home.
Are y'all ready for me to close public comment?
Yes.
Mr. DeBoer does not.
No, we're not going to. Joe got you a broom, man.
Shocker.
Halloween time, baby. Halloween time, you going to give us page or?
Well, yeah. Come on, Craig. Where you at, man?
I have plenty of transportation.
Come on back to your transportation, Mayor. Come on down here and get your broom. I got a little something I will say.
Go ahead.
Bring it up here.
My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at 10007 Hart Street here in Gallatin. And tonight, I noticed that we had some folks here that were involved with Mary's Place in Hendersonville. Seems as though Grandpa Charlie Appleton is a member of the Lions Club, and we've been pushing for years for people who have been, have problems with handicaps, and this is why we want to give this to the mayor. This broom is one of the last brooms that was put together by visually handicapped people as part of the Ed Lindsay Industries for the Blind down in Nashville. It seems as though the building that they were using for their, their business was owned by the state, and the state let it go so bad that they couldn't, we couldn't use it for the Industries for the Blind. Therefore, the state sold the property. I understand it, they bought a good price out on Charlotte Pike, about $2 million, and went in the state coffers. And the reason why I bring this to the mayor is the fact that we have, in the past, utilized October as being for handicap month for those, those people who are handicapped. And the reason why I'm wearing this nice shirt here is so that we can help our young people have a place where they can play, not, not unlike Mary's Place. And we want to support that issue teetotaly. But that's, that's part of what I was coming today, is to accentuate that positive thing. And, and Mayor here, come get your broom. You got to have your broom. Now, you got to remember, Mountain Page, this is one of the last that's ever been made. And I want to make sure you have plenty of time to use it before.
Notice how he's moving away from me.
Yeah, I won't get away from him because you can talk on the mic. So he can use it before the end of the month.
Yes, I, I, I like my broom rides, and you think I've earned as such. I do appreciate, I do appreciate the work of this organization. I don't know if they're still interested in existing, but certainly we would like to try and help them out here in Gallatin if they would like a location. I must say, though, I'm disappointed. I thought you were about to give us a check for the Miracle Park.
No. I'm a, I'm a poor man. I, I bought these shirts. I got one on underneath this one.
Well, I will use it as a reminder that Miracle Park donations continue to be accepted, and people are being very generous to support this effort, so.
And, and another thing politically, Madam, you've been cleaning up the city for the last four years. We appreciate that, and we just got news tonight, we're going to be able to put out the Gallatin, Albert Gallatin thing.
Oh, yeah.
That's, we've been fighting that for how many years, Jimmy?
Twelve and a half.
Many.
All right, and we're a tickle to death to hear that come through, and we're all tickled to death about that. So we just want you to know that you can clean up the mess that everybody else leaves for you. You're the best.
And thank you, I appreciate it, but no, everybody else has worked far harder.
Yeah, we know about you, too.
We appreciate the many efforts that have gone into it. Thank you, Mr. DeBoer, for being a champion of this city. We appreciate the many efforts that have gone into it. Thank you, Mr. DeBoer, for being a champion of this city.
Well, we gotta be a champion for the city, no doubt in my mind. So, with that, we'll leave you all to pace. Oh, by the way. Happy, hey, he took off. No, you don't. No, you don't.
I do believe Mr. DeBoer was about to.
Well, we're gonna, hey.
Spirited rendition of Happy Birthday, Mr. Gregory.
His loss, his loss is all I'm gonna say.
Well, he knows we care about him and do wish him happy birthday. He just didn't want to be embarrassed. Have a motion to adjourn by Vice Mayor Overton? Second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor, say aye. Everyone have a lovely evening, and we look forward to seeing you back here at City Hall soon.